Welcome, everyone, to our meeting of the Committee of the Hole for March 21st, 2016. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I want to disclose a conflict of interest, Item 6.1, Heritage Permit Application 77 West Mill, Alora, on the basis that I own a property adjacent to that property and have a business tenant that might be impacted by that.
Seeing no other notifications, are there any presentations or announcements that I haven't been notified of? I believe we're moving beyond that. Alrighty, so confirmation of the agenda. I have a recommendation here that Council of the Township of Centre Wellington confirm the agenda for the meeting held March 21st, 2016. Could I have a mover for that, please? Counselor McElwain, seconded by Counselor Kittriss, all in favor? And that is carried. And we have some delegations. I'd like to welcome our gallery today. It's wonderful to see all of you here with interest of what is going on in our community. And so before we start, I just want to say that today is a good news day at the beginning of our meeting and at the end of our meeting. So if you have time, stick around today because you're going to hear about lots of good things throughout the whole meeting. Alrighty, so I'd like to call forward the first delegate that's registered, and that is Janet Harrop.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name's Janet Harrop. I'm the past Chair of the Centre Wellington Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is a member organization of local businesses that work hard to help businesses succeed, acting to promote and serve as an information resource for local businesses. Chamber believe a strong business community provides opportunities for businesses and residents of our community. Many businesses in the retail and support sector rely on tourism traffic, events, and conferences hosted in our municipality to see the desired growth towards meeting their business goals. The closure of the Alora Mill and Footbridge has had dire consequences for many of the businesses on Mill Street. The current economic climate is quite tenuous for many of these businesses, and the anticipation of the conference center and the jobs and business opportunities that come along with that is something that we've been waiting a long time for. We've seen Pearl Hospitality be very inclusive with information gathering and sharing around the functionality and design elements of the project since they entered the community. They're working very hard to make Centre Wellington a go-to place for events, weddings, excursion, and new business opportunities. We recognize the importance of retaining the heritage qualities of the existing buildings and site are part of the charm and atmosphere that will be created with the new complex. As business owners, we recognize the balance of accomplishing the goals of a project in a timely manner, and the economics of the project are always of utmost importance when creating a business plan. The Chamber recognizes the arduous steps and allowances made by Pearl Hospitality to meet the heritage requirements, and asks the Heritage Committee approve the project as presented. The Centre, or the Council approve the Heritage Committee recommendations as presented. The Centre Wellington of Chamber, Chamber of Commerce respectfully and wholeheartedly support the approval of the heritage plan so the heritage permit may be issued and this project can move forward. The businesses in our municipality have waited long. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet. Our next presentation is from Fred Gordon of the Alora BIA.
I think that, yeah, I left it on "good stuff." Committee of the Hole and the gathered assembly here today, the Alora Business Improvement Area thanks you for allowing us to make a brief presentation today. On behalf of the nearly 100 shops, restaurants, and services of our membership, we wish to approach your committee today to make clear our total support for Pearl Hospitality's request for a heritage permit allowing modifications to the Alora Mill properties. Like everyone else, pardon me, the BIA has been concerned at the length of time that it has taken to get the shovels into the ground to get this project going. The closure of the inn coincided with a general downturn in the market several years ago, which just added fuel to the fire for our membership. It made bad times even worse. However, believe it or not, that delay has not all been for the bad. The intervening years since the mill's closure have permitted the BIA to meet the executives of and grow accustomed to working with Pearl Hospitality on their project. From day one, Pearl has shown a willingness to be involved with the BIA and our community. They have gone out of their way to specifically invite us to meetings and information forums. Without even operating their establishment, they have committed to our community by generously assisting with the annual Alora Horse and Hound Parade Hospital fundraiser and the Ice Jam Concert Series. At the most recent public house for the project, we were privileged to be able to talk at length about the development with the Pearl executive team. We have reviewed the proposed elevations and conceptual drawings for the facility. Throughout the evening, we consistently heard reference to terminology like reclaimed stone from demolished barns and sympathetic height and mass of buildings. We also saw modifications from original concept drawings that took into account some of the feedback that they had received to date. The proposed renderings of the new and renovated buildings that will have a direct impact on our catchment area look amazing. It's our considered opinion that the Pearl team is putting more than a strong effort into making sure that their needs and ideas will mesh with the uniqueness that our village has an international, that our village has an international reputation for. We sincerely believe that opponents to the heritage permit are not closely looking at our downtown core. Pearl Hospitality wishes to reuse the mill buildings in a sympathetic way to meet their needs while still retaining the historical significance that is so important to the community. If we allow and support change, it helps the long-term survival for these buildings. If we stop all changes, we risk demolition because of neglect. We sincerely believe that our heritage buildings encourage tourism and thereby economic security for downtown Alora. I address you today on behalf of the Alora BIA, as an everyday citizen of Alora, as a small business owner in Centre Wellington, and as the proud owner of two heritage buildings in this village, one of which is also going to appear before you today for consideration of historical designation. Such is my organization's and my personal belief in Pearl Hospitality's plan for our beautiful mill. We rest confident that the Pearl organization is a conscientious ward of this amazing landmark, and that their vision and plans for an expanded inn, as well as enhanced commercial development and tasteful residences on the shore of our heritage river, will blend with the mysterious and enigmatic charm that is our village. We believe that due process has been followed, and that there is a silent majority in our community that support the long-term goals of a beautiful facility bringing economic prosperity to our small but unequal village. We stand on the precipice of something that will indeed forever change the face of our village, but change does not need to be feared. We should be conscious of the commitment that Pearl Organization is making to our community, and given their demonstrated willingness to work with all of us, we should be ready to respond in favor of their request for a heritage permit. Thank you for allowing us to present at today's meeting. I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, Fred.
Thank you.
And now we have a resident from our community, Bob Cameron, who'd like to speak on this item.
Good afternoon. Well, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Bob Cameron. I grew up in Centre Wellington and currently own a business here. And whenever there's a new project or an initiative before council, I think exactly what was said, the silent majority, we all just don't say anything when we're in support of it, and only those few that oppose it come forward. And I think sometimes that gives council the wrong view. So I'm here today to absolutely and enthusiastically support Pearl Hospitality's project, both of the Alora Mill project on both sides of the river. Whenever I talk about this project, I get really excited because, to me, there's at least seven benefits to this thing that you can put your finger on. The retail and commercial development that's going to reinvigorate tourism, the Victoria Street pedestrian bridge that's going to be reopened and connect both sides of the river, the permanent access that the public's going to get and the connection of our walking trails along the gorge from now and forever, a hydro project where water's being diverted and hydro-generated the way it was literally hundreds of years ago, and a bit of a demonstration project to support that, and beautiful residential condos on the south side of the river that there's obviously huge demand for based on what we saw at the open house a few weeks ago. But today, I want to focus on just two benefits, and that is job creation and heritage redevelopment. First, job creation. My understanding is this project is being phased in, in three different phases. The north side of the project first, which is the mill and a total of five buildings, the millhouse, the granary, the stable, the spa, and Ross House. Second, the condo development on the south side. And third, the expansion of the hotel and the banquet facilities and all of the retail and commercial components. And every time I try and estimate the sheer size and scale of this project, and I put pen to paper just being nosy, it always exceeds $100 million. And I think about that, $100 million in construction in downtown Alora. Now, construction experts tell me that the labor component of any project is usually between 40% and 50% of any construction project, and that sometimes labor even is more than the material side of things. That means that this project, in my estimation, is going to create between 40 and 50 million dollars worth of labor injected back into the labor market, and hopefully, a lot of it in our community. That's $50 million spread over five years. So somewhere between $8 and $10 million every year for the next five years in new jobs. And those are great-paying jobs because they're contractors, and carpenters, and electricians, and plumbers, and painters, and flooring specialists, and road builders, et cetera, et cetera. So my estimate is that the construction phase alone is going to generate between 100 and 125 full-time jobs in our community every year for the next five years. And yes, construction's messy, and it's disruptive, and on the north side of the river, it could mean 18 to 24 months of tough times and disruption to our local businesses, but, and maybe three to five years on the other side of the river. But over the long haul, we're going to have an absolutely world-class development based on everything I've seen, and it's going to be worth the wait. And once it's operational and the construction jobs are gone, Pearl Hospitality estimates over 200 full-time jobs ongoing year after year that they're going to create. I think of what our community went through when we lost AO Smith and some of the other companies, and what we wouldn't do as a group to try and attract 100 and 200 jobs. And here's one right here. Next, I just want to talk briefly about the heritage redevelopment benefits of this project, and congratulate the Heritage Development Committee, and council, and staff, and everyone involved, working with Pearl Hospitality with the goal of the adaptive reuse of some of these heritage buildings, if they're going to survive for the next 50 to 100 years. For a 150-year-old building to function in today's current world, it has to make economic sense, especially from an energy efficiency perspective. The reality usually means that economics makes a heritage bill, takes a heritage building off of life support, and ultimately, it just falls into disrepair and dies. And usually, in this town, we've got a lot of heritage naysayers. And they're usually so fixated on that the building be redeveloped, and the buildings in the area be redeveloped exactly how it was. And I think it's totally unrealistic. They usually oppose anything that will work for today unless it's exactly the way of the building was years ago. Well, let's face it, 150-year-old buildings designed as mills can't work as a five-star hotel and a restaurant. I've seen what Pearl has done with the Ann Castor and Cambridge Mills, and I think the Heritage Committee has seen that work as well. And I believe that the Alora Mill will be even better. So again, congratulations to everyone involved for making this work and not listening to those negative naysayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob. And our fifth present, sorry, fourth presenter is Brian Blackmore of Pearl Hospitality.
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, committee members. It's truly a pleasure for me to be here today. It's been a long journey. Obviously, I'm here seeking this committee's endorsement of the Heritage Committee's recommendation for approval of our HIA, Heritage Impact Assessment, and our application for heritage permits for the mill buildings. I'm hoping we have a positive outcome. I'm ever hoping that we're going to have a positive outcome. But, you know, more importantly, I'm here today to really thank Chair Baranski and every member of the Heritage Committee, who gave so much of their personal time, understanding they're all volunteers. But there was a lot of volunteer time required to review the plethora of information that was provided. We had wonderful back and forth on the, on the design and heritage implications, and they even went so far as to agree to take a Saturday and come down to the Ann Castor Mill, which is a facility that is very similar in nature to the Alora Mill, and actually see the building materials on the ground. And I think it made a big difference to helping them understand what it is we're after and wanting to achieve here. So thanks to them, but also thanks to Marianna, and also your township consultant, Megan Rivard from Stantec, who made sure that information passage happened as smoothly as possible. So, once again, we're hoping for the committee's endorsement, and once again, looking very much forward to submitting building permits to this gentleman over here. So, thank you very much. If there are any questions, I'll make myself available. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. That is the end of our registered delegations, so we'll move into consideration of reports. Item 6.1 is a Heritage Permit Application. And just making note that Counselor Fisher's moving away from the table, and I'll call forward Marianna. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. The property at 77 West Mill Street in Alora, the Alora Mill site, is the subject of a Heritage Permit application made by Pearl Hospitality for restoration and rehabilitation work for the Alora Mill site, which is proposed as a hotel operation. A heritage permit is required because the property is designated under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. While detailed plans have been received for the five buildings that comprise the redevelopment site, only three buildings are included in the heritage designation and are subject to this heritage permit application. The permit was received in early December and has been reviewed by staff. The township's retained planning and heritage consultants at Stantec and Heritage Centre Wellington. The scope of the permit generally includes rehabilitation work on the mill building with replacement of an existing one-story east addition with a two-story addition, a cantilevered multi-story atrium on the west side for use as a hotel and banquet facility, rehabilitation of the James Ross House for use as an administration center, rehabilitation of the millhouse with an addition on the west side for additional hotel rooms. It should be noted that the stable ruins and the proposed private pedestrian bridge will be subject to future heritage permit applications as details are confirmed. After extensive effort and review and discussions with the applicant, as well as plan revisions, staff is recommending approval of the heritage permit application with conditions as outlined in the report before you. The recommendation is supported by both the consultant and the Heritage Committee. Both of their reports and analysis are appended to the staff report. The recommendation is in keeping with provincial, county, and township heritage and economic revitalization policies. In addition, it is in keeping with generally accepted heritage conservation practices and principles. Subsequent to issuance of the heritage permit, site plan approval and building permits would be following. So staff, the consultant, Megan Rivard on this project, and Kathy Baranski, Chair of the Heritage Committee, are all available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Marianna. Are there any questions from council? Mary Lynton.
Through you, Counselor Lloyd. I just wanted to say right off the top, I think that the approach that staff and the committee and Pearl have taken, the partnership approach, you are to be congratulated for that, moving ahead with a project that's this complex and, and large. Right from day one, that partnership approach, not an antagonistic approach, but a partnership working together, it's very clear to me when I look at the conditions that that is something that has to continue, and I'm really pleased that that's the approach that we took for this project. So just wanted to point that out. It was, it's a good example of collaborative working together on a, on a project that's in the best interests of this community, so good, good work.
Are there any other questions or comments on this application? Counselor Kittriss.
Thank you, Counselor Lloyd. I guess I'm, this question's actually directed to staff. I'm wondering if there was any requests for other delegations for people that were opposed to this development.
Through you. Neither Lisa nor ourselves received emails or telephone calls in that regard.
Speaking on my behalf, I did not receive any calls or emails regarding this. I don't know about the other councillors, but I know myself, I did not. I would like to say that, as a member of this council, we are looking at a huge project for the future of our community, and it's, to say that it's been a lot of work is a very big understatement. I think that it's been tremendous. The response to the public open house meeting, 300 people coming out, and the overwhelming comments of support and excitement, you don't see that very often in this position where the, the community comes out in such a supportive way for it. And almost the comment is hurry up and get going. But it was a very exciting evening to be part of for our community. And I, for one, believe that 25, 30, 50 years from now, people are going to look back and say, wow, wasn't that a wonderful visionary step to make in this community, and what a difference it's made to the life and, and living of those that are here and those to come. So thank you very much for all the hard work that's, that's happened on this. Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Morris.
Yes, I won't echo everything that's been said so far, but, you know, I think our community has been patiently waiting for something to happen, and this seems to be the, the step that's going to start the ball rolling in a constructive way. I do think this will open up a new chapter in our community, and that shouldn't be surprising. The sheer scope of the project represents that, in my opinion. What this new chapter will be like, I think we are, we're only at the beginning of it, so we see just vaguely the outline of it, but I think it's going to be exciting. I think it's going to be economically productive for our community. And I'm just happy that you're here today with this recommendation, Marianna, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Counselor McElwain.
Thanks, Mary, and thank you to everyone who has brought this forward, worked so hard to bring it forward. I just had one question as it related to a short paragraph on the Grand River, the Canadian Heritage River. And it refers to it being the responsibility of the Grand River Conservation Authority, which I guess we knew ahead of time. But is there, is there, are there any outstanding issues with the GRCA at all, or is that everything okay there? And do we, is there any chance that they would come back and say, no, you can't do that?
No, through you. They've been involved in the process all along, so the, I know the applicant has been heavily involved with them and in the process of obtaining all the necessary permits.
So everything is clean and green as far as GRCA are concerned at this point? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kittriss.
Thank you, Counselor Lloyd. I would like to echo what most people have said, that this development is outstanding and will be epic in changing Alora and Centre Wellington. There was the founding of Alora, and now this is probably an absolutely new beginning of our community. To have that much money being invested will absolutely transform this town. It will never be the same, and it will be epic-making, I believe, and all businesses will be boistered by that. And I do have some aesthetic concerns, though, specifically about the bridge. And I haven't seen a lot of, I've just seen renderings, and it does seem, of all the things, for me, the one that is most noticeable when you walk by. And because it is, I guess aesthetically so modern, I'm wondering about if there would be any possibilities of more stone being used in that construction, because that's sort of one of the blending points that we'll be able to transfer and be able to sort of accommodate with all the rest of the construction that's done. So I'm just wondering if Mr. Blackmore could address that question. Blackmore.
I, I, before we go off on this, I do believe that we're not considering that today. So I don't really want us to get sidetracked. We have the application before us, and it's not that we're not interested in what's going on with the bridge, but Marianna did state that that is coming forward in a separate application. Can it be that your comments, Counselor Kittriss, goes to Pearl Hospitality and Brian to make further comment on that at a later time? It's, it's just that we don't want to get one issue caught up in the other, and right now, we're really focusing on this heritage application permit, which doesn't talk about a new build.
I report that's coming further on the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge. I can speak to that a little bit further in regards to the design process. We're going to speak with, with Pearl and the county on all three bridges.
Thank you.
I can add to that, that the Heritage Committee, one of the conditions is that the Heritage Committee be involved in consultation on the design of the bridge.
Thank you, Marianna. I have a rather lengthy recommendation to read here, so I'm going to go slow so that I don't jump over words or my tongue. So the recommendation before us today is as follows: That the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington approve heritage permit number HP 2015-04 for 77 West Mill Street, except for the mill-stable portion, with the following conditions: Preparation of the conservation plan to be registered on title for 77 West Mill Street prior to the issuance of any building permits for exterior work on the property. The conservation plan should provide a strategy to conserve the identified heritage attributes during construction on the property, as well as into the foreseeable future, identified in short, medium, and long term. Any modification to the work plan is described in Section 5 of the February 25th, 2016 version of the Alora North Bank-55, 70, and 77 West Mill Street Heritage Impact Assessment, and be depicted on the site plans provided on the same report, will require issuance of a heritage permit. Standard township operating procedures regarding the heritage permits will apply. Any new materials proposed for the exterior of any buildings/structures on the site, as outlined in the heritage permit application revised February 29th, 2016, require municipal heritage committee review and approval. Consultation with the municipal heritage committee during the design of the proposed private bridge connecting north and south sides will be required. It is understood that the heritage permit will be required for the portion of the bridge that will enter 77 West Mill Street, a designated property. However, consultation with the municipal heritage committee should take place in advance of submission of a heritage permit for the bridge. And... And that the recommendation for heritage permit application HP 2015-04 generally includes the following works and buildings with specific details as outlined in the associated plans. The Elora Mill rehabilitation with east side addition, cantilevered atrium with support base on the west side, and Porsche, I'm saying that wrong, Port, Korsch, on north side. I'm not a builder, or I don't understand. The rehabilitation of the James Ross House and the west addition to the Mill House. Having read that, I'm looking for a boover. Counsel McElwain, thank you, and Counsel Morris, all in favor of that, and it is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. It's always exciting. Welcome back, Counsel Fisher. Item 6.2, Notice of Intention to Designate 48 West Mill Street, Elora, Periscope. And this is a report, again, from Marianna. Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Another good news story. This is Notice of Intention to Designate 48 West Mill Street in Elora. The property owners had approached the Heritage Committee for designation of this property. Staff in the Heritage Committee attended the property and conducted a heritage evaluation, and determined that the property does indeed meet all three criteria for designation under the Ontario Heritage Act, and therefore council is asked to proceed with an intention to designate. And would be pleased, staff will be pleased to answer any questions.
Well, I don't see any questions, so I'm going to read the recommendation. That council of the township of Centre Wellington state its intention to designate the property municipally known as 48 West Mill Street, Elora, to be of cultural heritage value and/or interest pursuant to Section 29, Part 4 of the Ontario Heritage Act. And that staff be authorized to proceed with the notice requirements outlined in Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and that if no obligation, oh, sorry, no objections are received within the prescribed time period, staff prepare and provide the designation bylaw for council enactment. May I have a mover for that? Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Kietres, all in favor, and that is carried. Thank you very much, Marianna. I can see that we're going to be busy with a lot of designations down in that area, as we're seeing major upgrades and good news for our economic development as well. Part 6.3, this is a demolition request that is actually regarding a listed property in our heritage list. So, Marianna?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. The owner of the property located at 6830 First Line West, former Pilkington, has submitted a notice of intent to demolish the dwelling on the property. The property is listed on the municipal heritage register as a non-designated property, and as such, the Ontario Heritage Act provides council additional time, in the form of 60 days, to consider whether a demolition permit should be issued. Staff in the Heritage Committee conducted some preliminary research and visited the property, and determined that the property does have some heritage value. However, staff and Heritage Committee feel that it is not sufficient to warrant designation to protect it from demolition. Therefore, staff and Heritage Committee recommend that the demolition permit be approved, and staff will be pleased to answer any questions.
Well, I don't see any questions regarding this one, so I'm going to go ahead with the recommendation. That the council of the township of Centre Wellington approve the request for an issuance of a demolition permits of the dwelling located at 6830 First Line West, Pilkington, listed on the Township Municipal Register of Cultural Heritage Properties, and that the property municipally known as 6830 First Line West, Pilkington, be removed from the Township Municipal Register of Cultural Heritage Properties, and that the owner provided, sorry, and that the owner provide to Heritage Centre Wellington complete photo documentation of the entire structure prior to its demolition, to be encouraged to salvage for reuse as much material as possible in order to divert from landfill. May I have a mover for that? Mayor Linton, seconded by Counsel McElwain. There's some quiet voices around here at the table, all in favor of that recommendation? And that is carried. Item 6.4, bylaw to dedicate, dedicate land as a public highway. This is Ryan Street in Fergus. And I'd like to call forward Mr. Salmon.
Thank you, Chairman Lloyd. This is a fairly routine matter. It's as a result of moving from Phase 1 of the subdivision that's called Summer Lee, and on to, on your map, you can see there's a Phase 2 and a Phase 3A highlighted. Those two phases are actually just about to open up. Phase 2 was recently registered, and Phase 3A is going to follow shortly behind, and so the, it's time to lift that one-foot reserve that was taken at the registration of the first phase.
Mr. Salmon, for our audiences listening, can you please explain where Ryan Street is? Because I think that people don't necessarily know that.
Okay, Ryan Street is one of the streets in the new development that's known as Summer Lee, which is north of Side Road 18 in Fergus.
Are there any questions regarding this recommendation? Seeing none, I'll read the recommendation that the council of the township of Centre Wellington pass a bylaw to dedicate Reserve Block 68, Plan 61M195, Township of Centre Wellington, as part of Ryan Street, Fergus. Could I have a mover? Thank you, Counsel Morris, seconded by Counsel Fisher. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Item 6.5, a draft plan subdivision, Swan Creek. And that's you, Brett.
Okay, thank you again. This is a draft plan of subdivision that you can see from my report has been ongoing for quite some time, going back to a file created in 2000, and for part of the property, one that goes back to 1987. In January of this year, the County of Wellington circulated a revised draft plan of subdivision to the agencies and public bodies, such as the GRCA and the township, where a commenting agency like the GRCA is. And as well, it was circulated to all the property owners within 120 meters of the subject land. The plan of subdivision is File Number 23T20002, and there are 30 lots for single detached dwelling, and a block for a combined stormwater management area and maintenance access. The lots are between .6 and an acre and a half in size, and they would be serviced by individual wells and septic systems. So as I mentioned, the subdivision goes back to one part, the westerly part of the property, I'll call it, was draft approved back in 1987, and then an adjacent plan was submitted in 2000. And subsequent to that, the two properties became owned by the same person, which is John Dunning of Dunning Homes, and he's here today in support of, of the proposal. He's taken the ball and run with the combined development of the two properties since that time. So since about 2000, sometime in 2003, we've been dealing with these two adjacent subdivisions, side by side, as if they are one plan. Various engineering reports and things have been submitted, water studies, stormwater management reports. Those have all been reviewed by the Conservation Authority and by the townships. Consulting engineers, we've recently come to the point where it was realized that the subdivision really, for the purposes of construction and going forward, would be best off being one draft plan. So in consultation with the county planning department, who are the approval authority for subdivisions, decision was made to resubmit one plan, close the 1987 subdivision plan, and they would recirculate a new plan under the, the file number that had been created back in 2000. So that's, that's what's happened with the more recent circulation. The county, in their circulation, they asked for comments to be received by February 12th. The county received several written submissions, and I've summarized the concerns that were raised in each of those letters in my report. The, and the county has asked, and the developer has responded to each, each one of the persons that wrote a letter, responded personally to those, outlining how those various issues have been addressed. And I've done that in my report as well. The public agencies, the GRCA, Upper Grand District School Board, Hydro One, and Canada Post have all stated that they have no objection. So just to go through my planning review, the subject property, it is within the hamlet of Inverhaugh, designated in the county official plan as a hamlet. Future growth and filling out of the hamlets is part of what the county official plan allows. So the residential development here is compatible with that. In our zoning bylaw, the land is partly zoned R1A and partly zoned agricultural. The public meeting for those zone change applications happened back in 2003. There really haven't been any changes, but if this draft plan of subdivision is approved, we will have to pass a zoning bylaw amendment to, to complete the zoning, and we can deal with the issue of whether or not a public meeting is required as part of that, that resolution. The county, for its part on the approval of the subdivision, determined that a public meeting wasn't required, and they circulated to, to all the property owners. In terms of some of the comments that we've received, obviously with a privately serviced development, the one we hear the most is related to the impact of the sewage systems and the impact on water supply. So the developer, back in 2008, submitted a hydrogeology report. It was peer-reviewed by Goldren Associates on behalf of the township. Subsequent back and forth between the developers' consultant hours have resolved the issues. It was concluded that existing wells are protected from the impact of the sewage. A nitrate impact assessment was done, and tertiary treatment systems are recommended in order to ensure that you, that, that the nitrate loading requirements are met. That is a septic system that has a higher level of treatment, and in most of our subdivisions these days, that's, that's a typical requirement, that a tertiary treatment system be done. Water supply pump tests were done, and they concluded that there's sufficient yield in the local bedrock for, for the 30 lots. Stormwater management plans have been reviewed. The township, the GRCA, and the county have worked together to relocate an existing outlet that we have some concerns, and, and the owner, private owner of that land with that outlet, has concerns about development going into that outlet, and so do we. We don't think it's, the current situation is appropriate. So we've, we have a plan in place to relocate that outlet. There was some correspondence with a concern that part of the property may have been used as a cemetery, and the developer has followed up on that with the, with the county museum and archives, and there, there isn't any indication that we can find that, that there had been a cemetery on the site. But as I pointed out in my report, an archaeological assessment would typically be required as a draft approval condition in any case. Street lighting is an issue, obviously, that we deal with, with subdivisions, and in my report, I pointed out that we have dark sky compliance as a township condition. So when the lighting is designed to municipal standards, the applicant, their engineering would be required to submit a photometric study that demonstrates that there's not light spill off, off-site. And then we use a, a third-party consultant to review that, and they review the photometrics. That's a typical requirement these days. Mr. Blackmore will tell you how, they've had to change the lighting on the mill and all that, in order to meet that requirement as well, that there's not light spill off the property. And in addition to that, we received correspondence regarding the safety of the intersection of the subdivision and Side Road 4. It was also raised back in 2000, when the subdivision was originally circulated. And the developer's engineer at that time did a review of the intersection, and it was determined that geometric design standards for safe stopping and safe site distances were met at that location, but that there is a need to review sort of the topography of Side Road 4 at that location when the detailed engineering review is completed. There's a little bit of a hump there, I guess, that there's some concern about how that would impact visibility, but that needs to be examined in more detail when the actual construction-ready plans are done. So in my report, I have outlined the revised plan itself and the conditions of draft approval that are the ones that the township and its consultants typically require, and with regard to the conditions related to the sewage systems, the maximum nitrate removal of 20 milligrams per liter that the reports recommended, and the well yield of four gallons per minute. Those are things that our hydrogeologists recommend to be included in the conditions, and so those are there. The county, from this stage, if council accepts this report, we would submit council's resolution in support of the draft approval to the county. The county would add the conditions that come from the other agencies, and they'll get circulated to the developer again, and we'll have some haggling usually over the wording of, of those conditions a little bit. And then the county would issue its, its notice of decision on the draft approval. If the county approves the subdivision, then at a future date, we will need to bring back the zoning bylaw amendment, so that will come back to council at a future date. That's our, our part. On this one, I suspect that the, the engineering parts, the stormwater management, the road design, are firing off along, and in this case, I think the developer's anxious to, to proceed immediately, so with, with development. So a subdivision agreement, I think, will also come back to council in the very near future on this one, once draft approval is in place.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. I've asked the clerk to put up the, no?
Can't do it.
Okay. In our package, we received a draft plan.
Yes.
And I do have a question, two, actually, two questions. One is regarding urban standards and, and building. Will there be sidewalks on this, in this little development?
Yes, there will. The, the subdivision standards that council had adopted back in the past, shortly after amalgamation, are similar to what you would see in Bellwood today, where the, the rural subdivision would have curb and gutter and a sidewalk on one side of the street. And the stormwater is conveyed with a, with a pipe in the ground rather than roadside ditches. That's the township standard.
Thank you. And my question also is about Block 31. It seems to have a little wee piece that goes from, I guess that Side Road 4, and that Block 31, right up to the cul-de-sac. What is the intention of that?
Well, as I mentioned, Block 31 is both an emergency access and the stormwater management block, so because this is a fairly long cul-de-sac, it's, it's within our municipal engineering standards that if the cul-de-sac is this long, there has to be an alternate access provided in the event of emergency, so that emergency vehicles can get in and out. And that will, in this case, also double as access for infrastructure to maintain the stormwater management facility. So the piece that comes out to, to the cul-de-sac bulb will be how emergency vehicles could get out to Side Road 4 if they needed to, and how township vehicles would get in and out to maintain the stormwater management. In those times when it's not needed for emergency purpose, it'll be a pedestrian access. So there'll be pedestrian access down to Side Road 4 through the...
Okay, so I keep saying I don't have any more questions, I have one more. We're going forward, working on transportation plan and looking at, with our county as well, looking at potential busing or transportation throughout our community. We're increasing the density of population in, in Verhaugh. Will there be an allowance for a spot to be a little bit of a bus pickup or a transportation hub for a vehicle to come in and pick residents up?
To be candid, I don't think... Um, to be candid, I don't think we're going to see the density of development in the rural hamlets. They're not subject to places to grow and the minimum density requirements to be seeing public transit at that level. But, uh, certainly there is room, the township is going to own that block 31. So that's, uh, that's where presumably it would be if we come to that. But I don't, I think that's pretty far reaching to expect we're going to have transit down there. We do have to provide with every subdivision spots for school bus pickup and all that. So that will be looked at as part of the detailed engineering.
Thank you. Counselor McQueen.
Because this doesn't fit in the density requirements of places to grow, et cetera, um, it's one of the few areas left in Center Wellington where we're going to have, for lack of a better word, executive home development. Does it still comply with the same requirements as far as, um, are, for instance, are they allowed to have boulevard trees versus what we have in town? Are they allowed to have different street lighting that looks a little bit more, what, you know, if they have, if they want to? I mean, I understand that they don't, that's up to the developer. But, um, are the rules for the executive development the same as for a high density development, I guess is my question?
Well, I think the standard in terms of where the tree goes, uh, depends on what's in the ground, where the stormwater pipe is. I wish Colin was here today because he'd be a better one to answer that question than I am. I think we would typically still see the tree on the, um, at the edge of, on the other side of the sidewalk, on the property side of the sidewalk. We don't, uh, the standard in this case, it's a bit of a hybrid between rural and urban. As far as the streetlight go, I think what we've been seeing is the developers have been adopting our decorative style of, of light in, in most of the new subdivisions, be it urban or rural. So, um, there's freedom for, uh, a nicer streetlight. That's what we've been, been installing in most of the new subdivisions is a decorative light, I think. Again, Colin's a better one to answer that particular question about the standard, but it's not, it's not a different standard as far as where the tree goes, to my knowledge. But, uh, the tree typically comes later in a rural, uh, development.
I just, I know that we've talked about boulevard trees as part of our growth committee in the past, and so I was hoping that maybe it would take effect for this development. Um, the streetlights are, the, the streetlights that we put on Irvine and going into Water Street, those, those aren't the same ones then that new developments have to follow or to, uh, install?
Well, I, I think we, we have been using a decorative light in the new developments. That's, yeah.
Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just, just a general question, Brett. Given, given the age of this original application, these applications and, and given, just looking at, at the material here, how long ago some of the supporting engineering studies were done? Are we confident or are we, are we applying current standards to this subdivision? Or are we somehow, because of the dates of the application, are they getting the benefit of standards that might have existed at that time? Certainly in terms of private treatment and maybe some of the traffic issues and stormwater management issues?
Um, no, I think the, the most recent changes that are reflected on this plan in particular are more current and the studies have been ongoing up until very recently. The hydroge reports were originally submitted in 2008, but the pump tests and things like that were done more recently. In terms of the provincial policy and sort of the hierarchy of servicing, um, we would, um, the, the type of servicing that's proposed here and the standard for, uh, nitrate loading hasn't changed. So those things are all, are all current. In terms of the design, um, our current standard again would call for a sidewalk and there was quite a bit of deliberation about that. Originally, the owner himself would have preferred a different standard, but I think he's accepted the standards that have been in place for the sidewalk and would rather proceed with those standards than go through the process again, so.
Counselor Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brett, my question is to do with the, uh, the park. In light of the fact that the, the plan is so old, I want to make sure that it's, um, subject to current parkland, uh, guidelines. So will this park be built and designed at the beginning of construction or will it be left for some unknown future date? And can you comment on the size of it? My eyes aren't that good.
Well, there, there, there is not a park in this plan.
Oh, I read the word park in this one lot down in the corner of this contour drawing on the left-hand side.
Oh, that, that, that's a, um, a, a description of, that's in the title. It wouldn't, not unusual on old plans of subdivision for lots to be called park lots. It doesn't mean that it's a park as a public park. It's a description of what on an old plan might have been a large lot would have been called a park.
But then it's also in your conditions on, on page eight, the second to last condition, that the owner satisfies the requirement of the Township of Center Wellington for parkland dedication.
And we would take cash in lieu of the parkland dedication in a situation like this.
Okay.
In a, in a parcel of this size, the park dedication wouldn't be large enough for us to get a park that had any utility at all.
Okay.
The stormwater management block will be public open space and there's a lot of, there's a lot of publicly owned land very close to this. So I don't think we need a park in, in Inverhaugh.
Okay.
None of the other subdivisions have parks, to my knowledge.
Counselor Keters.
Thank you, Counselor Lloyd. I was wondering what, uh, what's the, what's the percentage expansion of this subdivision to Inverhaugh?
Terms of the number of houses that are there?
Yeah. It's like 30%?
Well, there's 30, there's 30 lots here in totality of the whole of Inverhaugh. I'm not certain what that number is. There's a number of different subdivisions. Corey Drive, Counselor McQueen could answer how many houses are that. Is it six or seven? I was going to say maybe seven. Uh, there's Inverhaugh Road and, uh, the other Crescent houses in there.
Including the area around Inverhaugh, there were about 80 families from here.
Yeah, that's the number that was in my head, about 80. So it's a fairly significant in terms of...
But that goes up the road a little bit in all directions, kind of thing. The hamlet itself is smaller than that.
I just have another question. I was just wondering, um, because this is a, a significant increase in the town, I was wondering if there was any, um, economic development lands, uh, slotted for this town to bring a balance to this little hamlet?
Well, by policy, our official plan states that those other non-residential uses are permitted. Um, I guess the appropriate location for those would have been, and there was historically commercial use at the corner with Blondie's Lunch, a gas station. There's still a commercial use ongoing in that building, I guess. It's zoned commercial still right across the street from this, so there could be commercial development there. But the hamlet policies say that the form of development would be predominantly residential. And that's what we see in most of our hamlets.
I was wondering about the side road four. The condition of side road four is, um, quite poor. Uh, and I was wondering if there was any, uh, allocations of money from this subdivision for that road?
Uh, it wasn't identified in any of the engineering that was done. I think, as I said, there will be a need to look at where the intersection comes out and if there's any improvements that need to be made particularly at that intersection. But as far as attributing traffic, when you have a deficient road or a road that may need some repair, 30 lots isn't going to make a significant difference. So usually we find it, it's difficult to go back and pin road improvements on a specific proposal. Um, you know, and that's, the reality is road improvements of this nature are part of, uh, what we have to deal with, with our operating budgets and, and whatnot. But again, there would be some specific review of that intersection. But, uh, it's, it's generally difficult in the planning process unless it's a development charge item, which in this case it, it isn't. Um, a road identified in development charges, there's not much you can directly attribute cost to that road.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. We're seeing another great advancement in our community with this coming forward. So I would like to read the recommendation that the Council of the Township of Center Wellington directs staff to advise the County of Wellington. The township supports the approval of the proposed draft plan of subdivision 23T dash 20002, subject to conditions attached to Schedule A of Report PLN 2016 dash 12 dated March 21st, 2016. May I have a mover? Counselor McQueen, seconded by Counselor Keters. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. Item 6.6, thank you, uh, Mr. Salmon.
You're welcome.
Uh, item 6.6 is a report brought forward by Patricia Rutter of our Economic Development Officer. Thank you, Patricia.
Through you, Madam Chair. Knowing council's interest in economic development and the fact that I'm going to be bringing forward another business retention, uh, business retention and expansion action plan in the near future. Sorry, it was like the stage manager. I thought it would be a good time now to update council on where we are with that, the, um, current BRNE action plan, as well as some of council's corporate strategic plan items. As you know, in, uh, 2013, 2014, we did a, a formal BRNE with the county and, uh, the township visited 35 businesses. A report was sent to council on the action plan in October of 2015, 2014, um, after being reviewed by the Economic Development Committee. Two items were, um, forwarded to county council through BRNE funding that they had at that time and still do actually. Um, we applied for funds to do an investment profile and investment introduction video, which I'd actually hoped to be able to show you today, but we had some technical difficulties and it will have to, um, wait for its debut until the Chamber Municipal Town Hall meeting next month. The investment profile will however be, also be ready, uh, next month as well. Two things that came up during the, uh, business retention and expansion visits were communications with businesses and promotion of the community. As a result, um, with the major redevelopment that the, the township saw with our website, we added, um, some significant amounts of new business information and business resources to the website. Um, the status of each of the action plan items is actually included in Appendix A to your report, um, so you can see where we are with all of them. I'm just going to, uh, run through some of the sort of major initiatives that we have, um, talked about. One of the big things that we have looked at is, um, one of the big things we've looked at is, uh, the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Um, it has a, had an overhaul of its mandate and makeup, which now includes some significant active business community involvement in it. Uh, we have two active working groups that are looking at fees and charges and employment lands. Uh, it became evident during, um, ongoing discussion with the business community and in some inquiries that we've had, that the township had some, uh, fees and charges and land availability that weren't entirely competitive. And the committee's been looking at, the working groups have been looking at those and will be making recommendations to council in June on, uh, those matters. Since, uh, for the last two years or so, um, I've been making business visitations both during the BRNE, uh, formal programs as well as outside of those. I've visited more than 60, uh, businesses to date. I've visited, uh, most of our major employers multiple times. In fact, the mayor and I have another business visitation tomorrow. We've, uh, talked about workforce issues. We've talked about business growth issues. We've talked, uh, about, um, assistance through government funding, uh, the provincial and federal levels with them. Um, we've been able to, uh, resolve some, uh, what we call red flag issues and, uh, will continue to further do that. One of the other things, major initiatives that we've been looking at is the Community Improvement Plan. As you know, it launched in May of 2015. We've got three projects that have been completed, Alora Brewery, the Carter Gallery and, um, a commercial project at 742 Tower Street South. We have another four projects underway and we have another two, uh, that are pending. The, uh, BRNE that I'm currently doing with retail and downtown businesses has allowed me to talk to, um, many businesses about the advantages of the CIP program and many of them are now taking advantage of that. Some other initiatives that we've done, uh, our housing and jobs portal, which is Live and Work Center Wellington. It is a free online listing of both jobs and housing options so that users can see, um, there are jobs where they want to live and they can live where their jobs are. It's been, it, because it's free for businesses to use, it's, it's also been, uh, very popular with businesses when we've done our visitations. Uh, we are currently undergoing a commercial and industrial site plan review process review. Um, we tell, the staff are working with a consultant to, uh, review and streamline our process, taking a look at what we currently do, how we communicate with our clients and how we can make that process more effective. It was funded through a $25,000 grant from the county's BRNE Implementation Fund as We have been, uh, trying to engage in a pre-consultation process with businesses that come into, um, both local businesses and external businesses who come into town wanting to do some development. Uh, many of them who are unfamiliar with the process don't know what will be required of them, what we require of them and what the costs are associated. So we try to sit down with them at the beginning of the project, go through their project, um, let them know what is, what's going to be expected and what we anticipate, uh, costs will be. Another exciting, uh, video that I was hoping to show tonight, but we'll be showing at the, uh, Chamber Town Hall, um, is, uh, it's called the City View Video. It is, uh, a video that we have done, a five-minute video with interviews with the mayor, um, Pearl Hospitality, the Alora Brewing Company, uh, an Economic Development Task Force member and the Center Wellington Chamber of Commerce. The major, it, it's basically on our quality of lives, life and our business assets here. Um, but its big value is that it will be broadcast on the Business News Network as well as on 15 other North American, uh, markets. I don't have, currently have a, uh, broadcast date, but I will absolutely let everyone know when that happens. We are looking at a shop local program. We have been meeting, uh, FIRA, uh, which is the BIA's, the Chamber of the Township, have been meeting for quite some time, almost since I started on, uh, a shop local program. It, um, after a review of the Gift of Choice Program that many of you, uh, may know about, the program was discontinued because of the cost associated. We were just, um, not able to continue it with, um, in the manner that it was. So we've been looking at a replacement program that hopefully is self-sustaining. Uh, we haven't quite agreed on anything yet. Um, but in the meantime, we're looking at possibly an event in June for retailers where we can roll up, roll out some sort of a shop local, um, promotion and, uh, let the community aware of the value of shopping local. We, as I mentioned, are undergoing a second BRNE where we are visiting downtown and retail businesses. Um, as I mentioned, it's given me a great opportunity to be able to discuss with businesses, uh, the programs that we have available through the, the Community Improvement Plan as well as the jobs portal, um, and other initiatives that we have underway. I'm hoping that, uh, sometime after the summer... that sometime after the summer, we'll be able to bring that second action plan to council as well. With that, the Corporate Strategic Plan set out some actions for the Economic Development Prosperity, as well as the Economic Development Task Force. The first two are kind of linked. We wanted to deal with making recommendations on making the township more competitive first, before we developed a marketing plan for lands. Some issues around availability and fees and charges came up that make it important for us to deal with that before we proceed with any marketing plan. As I mentioned, both the fees and charges and the employment lands groups will be bringing recommendations forward to council, hopefully in June. The Program for Entrepreneurs, there are a lot of support programs up there, but not a lot of them have been delivered here in the township. I've been working with the Guelph Wellington Business Enterprise Centre, hopefully to develop a proposal to present to our Economic Development Task Force that would increase the amount of, and delivery of support and training programs for small startup businesses here in the township. One of the items on the Corporate Strategic Plan was to look at an incubator. One of the things we'll probably do first in this is take a look at some of the lessons that have been learned from the other incubator that's in the county, which is Ninto. They have learned that, some valuable lessons around support services that need to be provided, and the potential that it doesn't all have to be bricks and mortar. We'll also be looking at doing some discussions with the Community Futures to see what kind of programs they could bring to it, and developing a business case to, to see what kind of model would work the best here. Regarding the agricultural incubator, we've been working with the other townships. The agricultural incubator is, actually shows up on quite a few of the strategic economic development and cultural plans around the county, and it was felt amongst the staff that maybe it's something that we could all look at together and apply for some funding to do a feasibility study on whether there was one need in the county, or whether each township had a separate need, and what those needs would be. Is it land? Is it food production facilities? What would that be? So we're still in the process. We have a steering committee made up of a variety of different individuals across the county to develop that feasibility study and then apply, or to develop that application and then apply to the ministry to first some funding for that. And it comes down to the last one, which is the on-farm businesses that are permitted under our zoning. The province is currently reviewing some of its agricultural land use issues, minimum distance separation issues, and we'd like to sort of wait to see what some of those happen. And we've just become aware of, thanks to Janet Hare, that the Ontario Federation of Agriculture has a guide and checklist to support agricultural growth, which is really good, and we'd like a chance to take a look at that and see if there are some of the things in the checklist, to see where we are, and to see if we can implement some of those things that are in that checklist. And with that, that's my update. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Mayor Linton.
Just a quick comment through you, councillor Lloyd. We did invite Yana Burns, your name is now, to come and give a county economic development update next month. So I think it's really important that we're, we're moving in the same direction as the county, and so I thought it would be a really good opportunity for us also to hear, as a township council, what's the, what the priorities are from the county perspective, because we do want to make sure we're working together and that we're not overlapping in our roles, responsibilities, or not, and we're working at the same, at the same things, or at least, at least complementing each other as we move forward. Because obviously, you mentioned a lot of county initiatives, and we want to make sure that we're in sync, and we each know what our roles and responsibilities are. So that's coming up in April as well. Thanks for that update, Pat.
Councillor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a general question, and it might be, actually maybe more appropriate for Mr. Salmon, I don't know. We mentioned, or I think the report mentioned, a site, an industrial commercial site plan review process that is underway, I take it, right now. Is that, and I just want to be clear what we're doing this year. I was under the impression that we're doing a whole, sort of a general review of our development review processes this year. Am I right in that? And no. Okay, so is this the only one that's being done in terms of reviewing development application processes for industrial commercial properties in 2016? Yes. So strictly for industrial commercial, not for general development applications?
Well, in terms of the site plan part of it, what the recommendations to streamline the commercial industrial component will be applicable to other development applications as well, or particular site plan approval. The recommendations will have some overlap, but we tied it to commercial industrial, because that is what impacts on economic development, what came out of the strat plan, and what we would be eligible to get county, county funding for. We restricted it to that. But the site plan process under the Planning Act for all applications is similar, so there'll be overlap. If it's a large site plan for an apartment building, or a non-residential use, like a school or church, the recommendations would be comparable. The changes we make would be comparable. We've got a list of about forty things in front of us now that are being put out there for ideas on how to streamline the process.
Okay, just a follow-up then. So those ideas then would be applicable to other types of applications as well, if you see that?
Yes, that's true.
Thank you. Just one other follow-up, Madam Chair. Thank you. The other piece of it is the pre-consultation process. Again, is that limited to industrial commercial applications, or general planning applications? And the second part of that, is it a mandatory thing, or is it something that is an option for applicants?
I'll answer it. Currently, the pre-consultation is not mandatory. One of the things that the consultant on the streamlining the process review is looking at is whether we should make it mandatory. That's one of the things we are considering.
Alrighty. Thank you very much for your presentation. Very interesting to see all the things moving forward. And yes, it was part of our budget discussions of what's happening. So thank you very much for that. The recommendation before us is that the council of the Township of Centre Wellington accept the report PLN two zero one six, two thousand and sixteen dash ten, as information dated March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, by our economic development officer. We have a mover for that. Councillor Kittriss, seconded by Mayor Linton. All in favor? And that is carried. Item six point seven, in agreement with Whiteman Telecom, I believe. If there's any questions regarding, we have a case here to discuss it from our parks, or from our corporate services. No, community services. Got to get that right. Community services.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Whiteman Telecom has approached our staff with the possibility locating two potential, with two potential sites on our recreation lands owned by the Township of Centre Wellington. The sites will be used for, to house a telecommunications building containing switching gear and related accessories for their business. The license agreement which is attached in the report is solely intended for the location of the Sportsplex in Fergus. The area where the intended building will be located is beside the greenhouses to the west side of the Sportsplex property, and the building would be fifteen by twenty-five foot in size. Whiteman Telecom has also recognized the township's need to establish an emergency standby power at the Sportsplex, and has proposed a $50,000 donation towards this project. The prepared license agreement is for a duration of twenty years for council to consider approval, and the agreement has been reviewed by the township's legal staff.
I noticed that councillor Morris has a question on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, or Madam Chair. Just a question on the licensing agreement like that, $50,000 donation that you just alluded to a moment ago. How, how do we get that more ironclad? It's not in the licensing agreement, obviously. So is it just a gentleman's agreement that we have with Whiteman, that they're going to follow through on that commitment?
And any may be able to help me a little? I believe it is. It'll be with the agreement, the approval of this agreement, that that would come into play.
Correct. So we will tie the donation. We just have two separate properties, so we want to make sure that there's a separate for the donation, and then an agreement specifically to, for each of the land properties. So we will have an agreement on the overall donation
Thank you very much for that presentation. Again, we have to be so pleased that we have Whiteman in our community, which is providing fiber throughout the residential neighborhoods, and it's a significant investment in our community. And so I have a recommendation here, that council of the Township of Centre Wellington authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute a license agreement between the Township of Centre Wellington and Whiteman Telecom for the purpose of permitting Whiteman to construct a building on the Sportsplex land to house a switching gear and related accessories used in Whiteman's telecom, sorry, telecommunications business. Mover is councillor McEwan, seconded by councillor Morris. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Item six point eight, Drinking Water Quality Management System Annual Report. And we have Karen McMillan here to present.
Madam Chair and council, here again to talk about quality management. Seems like an annual event, which it is. So I just want to highlight, my report just highlights the big changes, things that happened in two thousand and fifteen, and where we're going in two thousand and sixteen. So you are receiving quarterly management review reports after we do our top management review with our CIO and your council representative, Don Fisher. So hopefully you're reading those, and that's really touching the performance of the water system throughout the year. What I wanted to touch on today was sort of just the big highlights. The Grand River Source Protection Plan comes into effect on July two thousand and sixteen, and the one thing we did was we brought risk assessment and emergency management together. So two things that really affects our drinking water system is our source protection plan and quality management. We brought the two together with our RMO, and we sat down and talked about the risks involved with source protection. So normally, we were looking at wellhead, right out to the distribution, to the, to the homes, and when we looked at source protection, we're looking at the risks that may be involved in the two- and five-year time of travel. So it's a much broader range of what could contaminate our aquifer and our drinking water. So that was a pretty successful process, and we came up with some procedures. And so the two systems are very married together now, which is, which is good. Looked at our emergency management review as well, which created a couple of procedures. So that, that took almost the whole of two thousand and fifteen to kind of come up with that. We've done training with our operators, and in fact, today, we just sat down with our road foreman, because the road staff are really our eyes out, maybe in that two- and five-year time of travel. Our water operators are the, are people in more of the urban area in our municipal drinking water system, but the road staff are the ones that are out in more of the rural area. So we brought them up to date as well. There's some updates that are going to occur in the quality management standard. Two are occurring for sure. One is adding best management practices into our quality management system, and ensuring a review occurs every thirty-six months. That, right now, we have all our procedures in place, and we actually review everything annually. This is something that will be in addition to, but should not be a lot of additional work for us. And the other one that's coming out is, right now, we do corrective actions for things that, you're looking at things that maybe, maybe have gone wrong, or just improvements. They've broken it up now into corrective actions and preventative actions. So that's looking ahead in time, and we do that very well already. We're looking at our overall system monthly, our QMS leadership sits down monthly, and we're looking at our procedures that are in place, and we're trying to anticipate, and we call them corrective actions, but in fact, they are preventative actions. So we're already doing that process. It'll be just updating our procedure to call it a preventative action. And finally, just one thing that I wanted to cover is our municipal drinking water license expires in August. We had a renewal date of the beginning of February, and we sent those forms in. We've already received back a draft for our review, so that is a very positive sign that they've accepted once again our operational plan, and we have to respond back to them by March the thirty-first. So things are going well, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
I would say you put a very thorough report together, because I don't see one question here around this table. So thank you, Karen, very much. We appreciate the work that happens in your department to keep the drinking water in Centre Wellington safe. Thank you. So I have a recommendation that the council of Township Centre Wellington receive as information, the Drinking Water Quality Management System Annual Report, as outlined in report number IS two thousand and sixteen dash zero four, dated March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, moved by councillor Morris, seconded by councillor Fisher. All in favor? And that is carried. Item six point nine, we have a word present of a proposal for consulting services for development of a fire master plan, and fired, our corporate service manager.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to draw council's attention to page two of the report, under Budget Financial Impletions. I was struck again by the copy and paste command, and the $963 over budget amount would be funded from the development charges fund, because this study is a growth-related study and is funded entirely from development charges. So the purpose of the study, as outlined under the report, is to conduct a comprehensive review of the fire department operations and develop a plan that will facilitate the provision of an optimum level of protection and rescue services appropriate to the community. The project is being managed by fire chief Brad Patton, and if council has specific questions about the process or the report, he will be happy to entertain your questions.
Mayor Linton.
To councillor Lloyd. Just a quick question, Wes, on the fact that we had five entities that registered as bid takers. This is on page one, and we received two bids. Was that surprising, or are we okay with that?
No, it was not surprising at all. The two companies that bid do approximately eighty percent of the business. There are other companies that do this, but their threshold, expenditure threshold is approximately $80,000, and some of them are American companies.
Councillor Morris.
Just a question, Wes, and maybe the fire chief himself can answer this question, but the scope of this study, does it look into the future, or just that we are in the present? And if in the future, how far into the future?
And I will direct that question to Brad, the fire chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council, committee. The project is broken down to three phases. We will look at what the fire department should be doing, or looking at doing, in a one-to-three years, and then a three-to-seven, and then seven-to-ten year
Well, I don't appear to see any other questions here regarding this. I knew that it was something that we had on our strategic plan, is something that we really needed to move forward on as our community is growing. So we have a recommendation here, that the council of the Township of Centre Wellington award proposal PROP zero one dash sixteen for consulting services for the development of a master fire plan, to the respondent having achieved the highest score, Dillon Consulting Limited of Toronto, in the amount of $54,996. of Toronto, in the amount of $54,996 excluding the HST. A mover for that? Mayor Linton, seconded by councillor Kittriss. All in favour? And that is carried. Item 6.10, we call forward again, Mr Snar.
So the resolution that you see in this report, the wording of it is, as was requested by AMO. I think I would have been a little more succinct, but this is the wording that they asked So municipalities in Ontario can only invest in equity markets and bond markets through the ONE Fund program. That's to ensure the sustainability and sound stewardship of these investments. I think that if the province had allowed individual municipalities to invest in the equity markets, you could be sure that by now, there would have been some bad decisions. So the regulation that governs municipal investments, it's Regulation 43897, a copy which is attached to the report, is very restrictive in terms of the investments that can be made through the ONE Fund. AMO, MFoa, LAS have long asked for prudent investor status. Toronto was, city of Toronto was granted prudent investor status effective the beginning of this year. And so AMO was asking municipalities for their support in lobbying the province for prudent investor status by passing this resolution. One thing that I would add, we took the opportunity to, sorry, we took the opportunity when we were meeting with representative from MFoa and LAS to review the township's investment policy. And to that, we confirm that we are free to invest in any of the LAS investment programs. So staff are going to be, and we haven't made investments through LAS in the past. We don't currently have investments in LAS, but staff are going to review our investments with a view to whether we should make some longer-term investments through the Equity Fund. It's a five-year investment horizon, so that's new for us.
Just to add, so this kind of gets a little bit at what councillor Morris has spoken to during our budget process. We are restricted through the Municipal Act, as Wes has spoken to. We have met with LAS and AMO, as well as our representatives from MFoa. We are looking, we have in the past invested in the ONE Fund. It did not come out favorably for us compared to our other investments, based on some of the structural changes that they are working with the ONE Equity Fund. We are looking to do some investment in it. We will continue to work with AMO and LAS and their pursuit with the provincial government to see if there's some restrictions that can be, or additional requirements that we can be investing a little bit more liberally to do that. So Wes and Mark are continuing to meet with our representatives from AMO and LAS to see what we can do. There are some sessions coming up from AMO on this in the next coming months that we'll be attending as well. But we are going to be looking at some investments in the ONE Fund, as well as working with our partners and our networking to see what other possibilities we can have within the Municipal Act that will require provincial changes to the Act or allowing municipalities to go beyond the ONE Fund. But we are currently sitting at the table with them to see what other investment opportunities we have, as well as talking to other municipalities as to what types of things that they're investing in or having their investment policy give them the flexibility to do those investments. So we are trying to explore beyond some of the previous boundaries that we've had. But we are fairly restricted for the province, but trying to work with AMO and LAS to be able to see what other abilities we have to do our investment strategies.
Just before I take your question, AMO stands for the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and LAS stands for?
Local Authority.
Local Advisory Service. So for anyone who's watching this, can understand what we've been referring to. So now councillor Fisher.
Thank you, madam chair. And just to be clear, so I understand this, AMO is proposing this resolution to support, is it designation of all municipalities outside the city of Toronto as prudent investors? Give them prudent investors? Is that something that would be mandatory or is it something that municipalities would have an option or ability to opt into?
No, it's directed to LAS. Under the regulation, municipalities can only invest in the equity markets through LAS, through the ONE Fund. And this would, and currently, the investments that LAS can make through the ONE Fund are very restrictive. So prudent investor status, basically, it would allow access to global equity markets and more Canadian investments. And it would allow the fund managers to better manage risk and generate higher potential returns in the fund.
Okay, so they get a more liberalized investment ability and we then get the choice of whether or not to avail ourselves of their services?
We can do that now.
We can do that now, but within whatever the range they have to operate in.
It improves, it would improve the performance of the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, in our conversations with AMO, they're wanting, they're looking for support from local municipalities to pass this resolution. They've had some dialogue with the ministry, however, it's very low on the total poll at the province. And so we're trying to, with AMO, work to bring that conversation to a higher level at the province.
But they have done it for Toronto, they just haven't done it for anybody else. And Toronto specifically can do their own investments as a prudent investor. They don't even, do they work through LAS or do they just work?
No.
No, so they're separate.
Like so many other things with the city of Toronto Act.
So AMO wants somehow for the rest of the province to catch up to that.
That's right.
Okay.
Councillor Morris?
Wes, does the LAS staff provide actual investment advice to municipalities? Or is it kind of you, it's like catalogue shopping, we pick our own package? Or do they actually come here, sit with our staff and educate and review the offerings and make suggestions?
They don't offer advice, but we did meet with them and to learn about what's available and to talk about this recommendation that they were circulating and asking us to bring to council.
And what fees are involved in using the ONE Fund? Like, are they basically no-load funds going in or are they deferred sales charge, where you have to stay a certain number of years before the redemption fee drops off? How are they structured?
Yeah, everything that you've mentioned sounds like private sector. They operate for the municipalities on a nonprofit basis, so their costs, the cost of managing the fund is quite low. They're not doing it for profit.
So they're equity funds, then? Are they basically index funds? Do they mirror the Toronto Stock Exchange Index, for example? Or, I don't know if they have any Dow Jones or NASDAQ indexes in their funds. How are they structured in regards to their actual pick of the investments?
Well, the regulation specifies the investments that they may make. It talks about, it's mostly Canadian, well, it's all Canadian. And it talks about credit ratings that are required. And that's one of the issues with the current arrangement, is that you could have a particular entity that qualifies today, because it's AAA. And if it gets downgraded to, say, AA or, because it's so specific, they would have no choice but to divest that particular company and return the funds to the fund and invest it somewhere else. That's why they're asking for prudent investor status.
Okay, so I have a long recommendation to read, so bear with me. Whereas municipalities are required to invest their reserves in accordance to the Municipal Act 2001 and the Ontario Regulation of 438/97 as amended, which specifically outlines allowable investments. And whereas to ensure the sustainability and sound stewardship of the municipality's investment, the municipality is of the opinion that changes should be made to the Municipal Act 2001 and the Ontario Regulation 438/97 as amended, to allow for the prudent investment of reserves, if those investments are professionally managed and part of a broader investment strategy. And whereas, the prudent investor standard is the industry-accepted best practice in effectively managing a portfolio of investments, and that standard applies to investments not in isolation, but in the context of the portfolio of investments and as part of an overall strategy that should incorporate acceptable risk and return objectives suitable to the stakeholders. And whereas the province has conferred prudent investor status on the city of Toronto to enable greater diversification of portfolio management. And whereas, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, and the Local Authority Services, LAS, and the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario, the MFoa, have long requested that prudent investor standard apply to all municipal investments that are invested in the ONE Investment Program. And whereas, in 2005, municipalities were granted the ability to invest in longer-term corporate bonds and Canadian equity investment via only the ONE Investment Program. And the ONE Investment Program has demonstrated strong investment returns from municipalities within these new investment sectors. And whereas, the institutional portfolio managers utilized by the ONE Investment Program recommended that the prudent investor standard approach is more appropriate approach to investing. And whereas, operating municipal investments under the prudent investor standard is precluded by the Municipal Act eligible investments in its current form, there be it resolved that the council of the township of Centre Wellington supports the request of AMO, LAS, MFoa to amend Ontario Regulation 438/97 as amended of the Municipal Act of 2001 to allow municipalities to invest consistent with the prudent investor standard if such investments are through the ONE Investment Program. Phew! And we have a mover, that is by councillor Moore, seconded by councillor McQuain, all in favour of that. And that is carried unanimously. Phew! Okay, item 6.11. Now that you've waited in the gallery so long, here is the news of the day. Go ahead.
Okay, well, it's my turn to bring forward a good news item. So just a little bit of background. So when Jack R. McDonald passed away in 2013, he left most of his estate to be set up in the Jack R. McDonald Charitable Trust, approximately $187 million to be administered by the Bank of America. And the will provided distribution to five charities, well, four charities and a township. So Centre Wellington and Seattle Unity Church reached to receive $25,000 US dollars per year, adjusted annually for inflation. The other three charities, the Seattle Children's Hospital Foundation, Salvation Army and University of Washington, each received a portion. The Children's Hospital Foundation was 40%, and the other two, Salvation Army and University of Washington, were 30% each. So the US Bank, which administers this, they have a duty to the charitable beneficiaries to maximize the rate of return and act in the best interests of the charities. So the three charities that receive percentage distribution have proposed reforming the trust, which can be done under Seattle state law. And what they've proposed is a one-time distribution to Seattle Unity Church and to the township of Centre Wellington in the amount of $1.5 million US dollars, in exchange for ending the future stream of $25,000 per year. Staff recommend this. It's financially, it's a very good deal. The annual inflationary adjustment would represent or offset the time value of the future stream. So the bottom line, as an accountant, I like to get to a bottom line, is that it's a choice between $1.5 million receipt now or $25,000 per year over the next 60 years. The recommendation from staff for the distribution of the funds, when I wrote this report, it was approximately $2 million Canadian. The exchange rate has strengthened since that time, so it would be a little less than $2 million if we were exchanging it today. But the recommendation for the disbursement of the funds is first to clear the internal loan for accessibility improvements, which is the elevator out here in the upstairs and downstairs public washrooms. Because that loan was being repaid from the $25,000 per year distribution. And the balance to be directed to our downtown public realm improvements, which includes Victoria Street pedestrian bridge and streetscape enhancements. It's also recommended that, this is a tree up to $1 million, it's designated in year 2017 of the 10-year capital forecast. And it's recommended that be determined through the 2017 capital budget process. There you have it.
And I believe there's some comments from our CIO on this. Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair. I think this is a great news story for our community. We have a very long agenda of items that we need to accomplish within our capital budget. I think it's very prudent for us to look at this as a one-time expenditure. A couple of key things with regards to the trust. It has to be spent in the town of Alora. It cannot be spent Centre Wellington-wide, that's a condition. These discussions have been going on with staff for just under a year now with the US Bank, so it is something we've been aware of. Unfortunately, we've had to keep those discussions very confidential. We have looked at trying to bring this forward to council previously, but under the municipal regulations, it did not fall within any of the categories to bring this in through a closed session. So we would have to bring this as a public meeting. And we were asked by the US Trust Bank to keep these confidential, so we've had discussions with our lawyers. And with regards to that, who have been guiding us through some of the technical aspects with regards to the US laws. It's very complicated from their end with regards to the other trusts or the other organizations. I think the risk as we go forward, if we do not accept this, is with regards to the global markets and the Canadian-US dollar. We had quite a bit of discussion about the US dollar with regards to our purchases, with regards to vehicles. And I think as we start seeing some vehicle equipment and other tenders coming in with that, we're already seeing those impacts. So it's a good opportunity. And if I know Wes well enough, he'll monitor the markets daily as we get this check coming forward and make sure we get the best value for our dollar. I think it's a huge opportunity for the town of Alora and our public realm, as we've been out talking about the Pearl Development and some of the changes we're making to our downtown with our BIAs and our stakeholders. Clearly- making to our downtown with our BIAs and our stakeholders, clearly, we're making some significant improvements in front of the Pearl development through Pearl's expenditures. They're paying for those. Through our public meetings with the BIAs, there's a disappointment that we can't continue that on through the rest of the downtown, especially on West Mill Street. So, this gives us the opportunity that while we're in doing that construction with the other projects and the Pearl development, we can wrap those all together with the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge, the Victoria, the West Mill Street improvements, the Mill Street Pumping Station, as well as parking lot enhancements on the south side, all to come together so that we can get all this. And I think, as Fred had mentioned earlier today, trying to get all this construction done within a short timeframe so that we can all benefit for this down in the future. The future economics that we see from a tourism destination for the downtown and with Pearl development all coming in, this is a unique opportunity for this community. And it is a big thank you to the McDonald Trust for even considering Centre Wellington and the town of Alora for this gracious donation to the township. So, with that, I pass it off to Chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Councillor Morris?
Just a question for clarification. In the report on page 268, the amount is referenced in terms of Canadian dollars at approximately $2 million using current US-Canadian exchange rates. And yet, in the recommendation, it speaks of $138,000 being used to clear an internal loan, and then $1 million to be considered in the 10-year capital forecast on the 2017 budget process. What happens to approximately the other $862,000?
So, those are the funds that we're recommending towards the development of the rest of the West Mill Street with regards to the public realm enhancements, with regards to streetscaping. We're already doing a substantial amount of work at the westerland of West Mill and ripping up the sidewalks and some of the road with regards to the Pearl development. Union Gas has just been in there the last few weeks. What we'd like to do is use the rest of that funding to finish off the streetscaping with the new sidewalks, burying the four, I think it's four remaining hydro poles with all the servicing on the, I always get this confused, north side of West Mill Street, burying all that underground, and then relaying the sidewalks underneath. So, we haven't worked out all those details. So, that's what we're recommending that we would come up with as part of the design. The next report speaking to doing a design process through, for the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge, and we would wrap that into also looking at the public realm from Metcalf basically to the Alora Muse Building and the Sheep Building, Sheepskin Building, so we can continue all of the improvements that we're doing on the westerland of Mill Street all the way over to Metcalf Street. So, we don't have an exact estimate of what those works are. And until we get an actual number and the conversion, we will come back with a final report of laying out all those cost estimates and what those designs will be. But our anticipation is that we will be needing to use all of that funding, the costing to bury the underground utilities and put in new sidewalks and street lamping and things of that nature would be part of that public realm expenditures.
Just as a follow-up comment to what you're saying there, is I'm not sure I'm entirely comfortable carving up a $2 million windfall, which has sort of come unexpectedly to us based on a 10-minute discussion. Is it not more prudent that council should think hard and long about how to utilize this money before we start just simply allocating it away? It might be something that could go into a reserve and fund community projects for the indefinite future. I'm not totally comfortable that we should start carving up this money today, quite honestly.
It's staff's recommendation that we put forward with regards to, we know there was a lot of discussion within the community and council with regards to the pedestrian bridge and using tax dollars. A number of our budget discussions looked at how do we do bring alternate revenues into offsetting some of those capital costs for our projects. We see an opportunity that we can defer, not have the cost coming from the taxpayers for the $1 million for the Victoria Pedestrian Bridge. That's a good news story, as we feel. It's already a commitment that we've made by council and are starting a design process so we can use that opportunity. The deferred funding, the 2017 funding that we would be using for the pedestrian bridge would be open for discussion with council as to where that funding would go. So, it's really just expanding the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge discussion to including the downtown public realm. As council's aware, we are looking at sharing a cost of parking lot enhancements on the south side of the river with the Pearl. Those funds have not been identified in our capital budget in the past. So, we are needing to have a source of funding in order to provide that development. From a timing-wise, we see that the pedestrian bridge, we'd like to get designed and constructed in 2017. We've got Price Street going under construction in 2016. We have the Mill Street Pumping Station starting construction in January. So, we think there's a huge opportunity that while we're in doing construction and discussions with the BIA through those public meetings of not revisiting, getting these underway, so with a shorter time period that we can have the construction and have the downtown back open for business would be beneficial to the entire community.
Thank you for those comments. I hear what you're saying, councillor Morris. It's very, it is a large endowment coming into our community. It is something that, seeing the value of it coming all at once as opposed to a $25,000 gift going up each year. But I think we have to be mindful of the fact that this is specifically designated for Alora, and that an opportunity like a pedestrian walking bridge that may be renamed to the McDonald Walking Bridge because of the funding that's going towards it, is in a way to pay respect to Mr. McDonald, who made such a significant gift to our community, as we are now sitting in a building on McDonald Square. It's important for us to be mindful that while we could use this for so many other things in our community, that we are really limited as to where we could be. And we have to place those gifts in a way that recognize the significance. And we don't have other bridges within the Alora urban boundary that are ours to replace. And I have received many comments from members of our community that are not so pleased on seeing $1 million of their tax dollars going to a walking bridge. And this opportunity to turn $1 million into a beautiful walking bridge in our downtown of Alora and not take it out of our municipal tax base, that's a significant way in which to handle that. But I also understand the concern about the balance of the money, and we're just kind of not thinking about what it is that we want to do without knowing what the cost for the improvements of the balance of Mill Street up to Metcalf. So, I understand where you're coming from on that.
It's not a matter of disputing where the money should be used. I mean, that's clear in the agreement between the township and the trust. What I'm reluctant to do is just simply kill the goose that lays golden eggs here so quickly. We don't know what the cost of the footbridge is yet because we haven't gone to tender. We went to tender on the Irvine Street Bridge expecting, what, $800,000 expense, and we came in under $500,000. So, we don't know what the footbridge is actually going to cost the taxpayers. My reluctance is just simply saying this windfall has come our way unexpectedly, and here we are in 10 or 15 minutes deciding how to burn through it. We will always, always, always have projects to throw money at. The question is, should we use some of this money to last a lot longer than just one or two years? Whether we should burn through it now, or whether we, you know, if this didn't happen, we'd be getting $25,000 a year indefinitely. The fact that we're getting it as a lump sum doesn't mean that we should just automatically go and blow it all, in my opinion. So, I'm a little reluctant with that last part of the recommendation to simply say, okay, we're going to start carving this money up right away. $138,000, I don't have any problem with that. Let's pay off the loan. But $1.8 million, I'm not ready to carve that up yet.
Councillor Kittriss.
Thank you, councillor Lloyd. As you all know, I lobbied to have the pedestrian bridge built. And I think that, I am a little reluctant in cutting it up because we have not actually discussed what that bridge would look like and what the costs would be for that. The people that I have worked with, that I thought we would have a meeting prior to this one, their plans or designs may have cost over $1 million. And so, since this is a windfall, and we are looking to put on and match what Pearl does, it would be, I think, a little bit premature to just limit the amount of money that that bridge would be. We are looking to match what they do in Pearl. And one of the recommendations that I had for that bridge is that it also is an artisan and an income-producing bridge. And so, we don't know what that cost would be. It's not a standard bridge, a pedestrian bridge. And I think that it's a little bit premature to start as a, for different reasons than councillor Morris, to carve that up, because we don't have a plan for that, and it may cost more. Particularly, the idea that that bridge would be covered so that it could accommodate, in any weather, that kind of economic development.
Mayor Linton.
Through you, councillor Lloyd. Just a couple of comments. Firstly, this is something that staff have been thinking about for not just, not just a few days. This is something that was in the wings, that they couldn't share with us for a while. So, a lot of thought has gone into this initially. Realize that council, council hasn't seen this for a while. So, that's a point taken. The fact that we do have the Victoria Street Bridge currently being paid by a taxpayer, we went through that process with council, and that was a tough, that was a tough sell. I know that we had talked to a number of citizens who felt that, why are we moving forward with the pedestrian bridge in Alora when we have a lot of vehicular bridges that weren't getting fixed? So, this is, we have the opportunity now, which is very unique, and it's a one-time thing, of taking a project that we've already identified as a priority and taking it off the tax base and applying this gift to that on a legacy project. And to me, that's a key element that, any kind of project that we do attribute this funds to, it has to be a legacy project that is going to last for years. It can't be something that sits in a reserve and then we keep adding to it, and someday, we're going to do, you know, some splash parks and things like that. It has to be a legacy project, has to be in Alora. And the timing is really unique with Pearl development going on, the work that we're doing in downtown Alora. I can't imagine the timing or the project being any more suited to this kind of gift that we have right now. So, I'm very supportive of the recommendation right now. Obviously, that frees up some money for us that we had attributed to this bridge. That frees up some money that we're going to have to have discussions about at a council level, what we should do with that. And I like the recommendation where we push that discussion off to have more council deliberation about that, because now we're in a good situation. So, it's excellent news. I think we have to leverage this as a legacy project in Alora and use this in the way that was laid out in the recommendation here.
And our CAO, Andy.
Just to clarify, this is very similar to our capital budget process, where we've allocated a certain amount of money to two, to two projects here, downtown public realm and the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge. As the report, next to this, going through the community process for the design of the bridge, we would report all of that back with cost estimates and then everything for council to see the details. You know, specifically, if it's a $1.1 million or $900,000 bridge, those details will all come back to council as part of the design process and how much money is going to this specific project. What we were just outlining here is we would dedicate this as two capital projects, one to the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge, which is already identified in the 2017, just a different funding source, and then the downtown public realm piece, in order to say, those are what we're putting the money towards. At this current stage, we have a design and cost estimate process to go through, and we would be coming back to council for all those final details as to, as councillor Kittriss says, if the bridge is $1.1 million and the sidewalk is only $400,000, or whatever those pieces are, we don't know those yet because we haven't had the opportunity. This, these numbers have changed just fairly drastically in the last few weeks. So, we haven't been able to pull those details, and we haven't been able to work with consultants as part of our confidentiality, couldn't even release that information to some consultants to be able to help us get some of those cost estimates or to staff. Very few staff have known about this and being able to work with the details from that confidentiality. So, we thought it would be best just coming forward and saying, here are two key, specific projects, capital allocation-wise, that we can see the funding going to. We would bring all of those details in the design process and those cost estimates back to council for final approvals.
Councillor McIlwain.
Thanks, councillor Lloyd. Can I make a suggestion that we cut off the last half of the second paragraph there and just say that the money is going to the Alora Downtown Public Realm improvements, and we can call it reserve fund, if you like, and then it can be what it actually gets spent on. We do have some time then to look at it and determine it when we get the estimates back of all of the different costs. Would that not make sense instead of listing each thing individually at this point?
I think staff would be fine with that change to the resolution. We just thought we should provide some details so that council's aware of what we were thinking of with regards to the funding. But if council so desires to leave it off as double downtown public realm with the intent for staff to come back saying, here's what the costs are here, all the different projects, I would be, we would be fine with that.
So, to clarify, the second paragraph, you're suggesting that we amend it to end at, councillor McIlwain?
Basically, at the end of Alora Downtown Public Realm Improvements, and leave out the whole bit that, which includes, kind of thing. Well, that's part of downtown, I mean, it says here that that includes the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge as part of downtown public, yeah. So, I would say, yes, that covers everything, right?
Looking around the table, do I see nods of heads for the amendment change? And I see a shake of head the other way. So, councillor Kittriss.
Thank you, councillor Lloyd. I would like to have the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge in that wording, because that's what will be the legacy piece.
So, then you're suggesting that the recommendation go forward to include the construction of the Victorian Street Pedestrian Bridge, where it says "and," we're going to eliminate that portion? Councillor Morris?
I think that's redundant, because I agree with councillor McIlwain. I think that basically the Alora Downtown Public Realm improvements, if and when that Victoria Street Bridge goes forward, that is captured, that's captured, in fact, in that, in that statement, basically, because it is a downtown public realm improvement. So, I think it's redundant to specify it.
Mayor Linton?
Through you, councillor Lloyd. The only, the only challenge is, and I get that, it is a little bit redundant, but it also specifies something that's net new. Like, if we're talking about public realm improvements, that's a different thing than creating a new bridge. So, I do think we should be, we do think we should have wording that can be appreciated in the community as to what we're actually talking about.
Councillor Morris?
I understand what you're trying to say. But I think, I think all of us here recognize that Mr. McDonald's legacy has to be respected and somehow promoted. So, I think the pedestrian bridge obviously is going to be the centerpiece of the downtown improvement. So, I don't think not having it there is going to put it in danger of being excluded from this money, because I think we all are in agreement that something significant should be built using. should be built using this money, perhaps, you know, going forward, so that Mr. McDonald's legacy can be front and center. So, again, I say it's redundant to specify it in this resolution. Why put the resolution at risk for something that is just redundant?
I'd like to speak to your comment, because I actually am in agreement with you, Counselor Morris, because when we start saying a bridge or a specific thing in it, there's been price tags out there. So, the residents will suddenly say, phew, now we don't have to pay for that, or this isn't happening, or the money can go to this, or go to that. It allows us, as council, to have that opportunity to discuss the items that we've...we could possibly be paying for, or that we intend to use the funds for. So, I kind of like ending at the public realm improvements, so that it doesn't limit us to or actually add on to anything that we could be doing. It just ends right there. Okay, so Counselor Fisher hasn't really said anything on this. What is your feelings?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have to be careful here, because the discussion has moved off. The more you talk about the bridge, I did declare a conflict on the pedestrian bridge, you'll recall. My take on this, and the reason I didn't declare a conflict, is simply that this is a way to pay for something council has already decided to do. And that was my conflict, was the decision to do it. Having decided that, the issue, and I think it was just summed up, is how are we going to take non-taxpayers' money and apply them to a project? And there's several projects in this list, Price Street, the Mill Street sewer sidewalks, at least up to a point, the gas, the hydro. All that stuff is approved. It's going to be done, at least in the way things currently stand. Right now, it's going to be paid for by the taxpayers. So, the only issue in front of us is, are we going to substitute any of those tax dollars with this money? That's the way I see it. I think it's, to some extent, semantics, and we've been getting the debate whether or not you leave that reference in the resolution. I am ambivalent. I think either way, people have to recognize that if it's not in the resolution, and somehow, as a result of this, we choose not to put this money to a particular project, we're still going to do that project. That simply means the taxpayers are going to pay for it. So, whether we have that debate now, whether we foreclose that debate by adding certain things in here, or whether we wait and do it when the costs come forward, and I certainly take that, I don't think we have any idea, really, what the costs are going to be of any of these things, or some...we have some of the ideas, but not all of them. To me, I don't know if that matters a whole lot. I don't think if there's any fear about keeping, for example, the bridge out of the resolution, that somehow this money doesn't get put towards the bridge. Fair enough, that would be an option. The bridge goes forward anyway, because of what council has already decided. So, whether or not you want to include it, I'm not going to take a position on that. I simply think that the issue in front of us, and let's not lose track of it, is simply, are we going to use other funds, alternative funds, which we talked about quite a bit over our budget process, for some of these already identified and approved projects? Or are we going to reserve the right to apply those funds somewhere else and continue to fund these projects through the taxpayers? Either way.
Thank you, Counselor Lloyd. Although I appreciate everyone's input on this and the wording of it, I think I just have to reiterate that we do not know any costs of anything at this point. But we do know that we have allocated capital funds for the Victoria Street Bridge. And this is really what this is replacing. And I do feel very strongly that that is what has to be stated, at least in this recommendation. And so, I do think that we do need to include that in this recommendation, so that there isn't any confusion by anyone's part, that taxpayers are also not spending any money on that bridge. That's my take.
Mayor Linton.
I'm not going to make a big deal about this. I agree with Counselor Kittriss. I do think that is something that we did hear a lot about, and so, to have the recommendation explain some of the best characteristics of this new, net-new money that we have, I think it will...it would add to it and get a lot more community support for it. But, I mean, if it's...I do understand the other side, that we haven't allocated the money, so I'm not going to stand in the way of it, if that's the will of council, to end before you get to Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge. I don't think that it's worth it, but I do think it makes it a lot stronger with it in, so...if it's the will...if the majority of...if the will of the majority of councillors, they feel good to add that period in a little bit earlier on. I just want to make sure that we are of the same mind, that that is a big part of the project. And if we do really think that this is a big part of the project, well, why don't we just say it?
Okay, we're getting direction from the clerk.
I don't really have anything to add, other than the clearer the resolution is, the better. It is council's...in order for staff to do what we need to do, council needs to make it perfectly clear, what they want us to do and what they want us to move forward with. So, this resolution, the way it is, is very clear. If you start mucking with it, then it becomes a muddier water as to what we want to do. If council isn't prepared to have the conversation now about allocating this money specific for the project, then we can have that discussion later. But that's effectively what you would be doing today, is we would have to have that discussion later.
Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just in that spirit, I think what we're talking about here is where to put a period. We're going to amend this resolution. There's two potential amendments here. One is to put a period after the word "improvements," and the other is to put a period after the word "bridge," as I understand the discussion. So, either way, I suspect that's a clear resolution. It's really, we're dealing with suggested amendments, one of which is to put a period after "improvements," which I think was Counselor McQuain's, and one of which is to put a period after "bridge," which would be Counselor Kittriss. So, however you want to frame that discussion and do a vote, we got two amendments, we vote.
We also have a statement that comes later, that's to do with the reallocation of $1 million to the capital, that we haven't really kind of had a discussion on either. We've only focused on whether we're going to say the bridge is in or out, or what have you. So, I'm looking to you for that statement inclusion or elimination.
My understanding of that paragraph is that that is the money that was taken from the Middlebrook Road project, or a project.
Victoria Street Pedestrian.
No, but it was taken from another item and put towards...
Correct.
Victoria Street. So, again, just the way I would read this resolution, if you put the period so as not to include Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge in this resolution, then that implies that you take out that last paragraph. If you put the period after "bridge" in this resolution, that implies, I think, that you leave it in, because you've now dedicated this money to that bridge, meaning that money, which we previously allocated, is now up for discussion...
Yes.
...in 2017.
Correct.
So, it would stay in. I hope that works.
Thank you for that clarification. So, having heard that clarification, what is the will around the table for the inclusion to take the statement through the end of this word "bridge"? Okay, so I...alrighty. So, I'm going to read the recommendation and see if I can get a mover and seconder for where I end. So, recommendation that the council of the Township of Center Wellington pass a bylaw to authorize the managing director of corporate services/ treasurer to enter into a non-judicial binding agreement to reform the Jack R. McDonald charitable trust, and further that the distribution from the trust in the amount of U.S. dollars, $1.5 million, be allocated as follows: a Canadian amount of $138,000 to clear the internal loan for the Civic Center accessibility improvements, and the balance to the Alora Downtown Public Realm improvements, which include the construction of the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge, and further that the reallocation of Canadian $1 million in the year 2017 of the 10-year capital forecast be considered in the 2017 budget process. May I have a mover for that? Moved by Mayor Linton, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kittriss. All in favor of that? And that is carried. Big, good news for us. This has been a very exciting meeting. So, item 6.12, I don't know about you, but I'm excited by this. Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge Class Environmental Assessment and Design Concept Process. Mr. Goldie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, after that great news, and as we have spoken to council during the budget process, we are looking to bring forward a public process to look at the design, overall design of the pedestrian bridge, and based on the past resolution, to looking at expanding that into some of the downtown public realm. As you know, the county is already a long way along, or partway through their EA process with BTE Engineering, with regards to the Badley Bridge, the Metcalf Street Bridge. So, we have spoken to them and spoken with the county staff with regards to expanding BTE's work with regards to the EA process, which is a process we would have to go through anyway for the bridge, probably a little bit scoped down, because it is a pedestrian bridge. But we're also already aware that the Ministry of Tourism and Culture have made comment with regards to the stone piers for the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge, in regards to the Badley Bridge. So, that's already highlighted with regards to an EA process. So, we have received a proposal from BTE, and through our purchasing, we do have the ability to tag on to other municipal contracts with regards to that, so that will save us substantial dollars, rather than having to go out and doing a whole EA process. A lot of the information is shared, because all the contextual pieces with regards to the location is all very similar. We're talking a couple, you know, less than 100 meters down the road from where the Metcalf Bridge is. We've also had discussions with Pearl and with the county, previous to the other good news, with regards to looking at a design kind of guidelines with regards to all three bridges, because that has been part of the process we've gone through with the county. At their public meetings, they're looking at design criteria and guidelines for all three bridges, so that we can speak to those throughout the process. And so, that would be part of the process, as well as going out into the community. As we know, as Counselor Kittriss has mentioned, we already have some proposals being out there from the community members, so we'd like to include those into looking at a review of what the overall design of the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge. We have seeked out a proposal from Stantec Consulting, who, as you know, are a vendor of record, and have been working with us on the Pearl review. So, they already have a relationship with Pearl in regards to the design process and the heritage components. It'd be a very same heritage team that's coming forward from them with regards to reviewing the Pearl Development. A new part of the team would be their architects and their bridge folks, that would look at various concepts and costing, so exactly the discussion we just talked about. One bridge is $700,000 versus $1 million versus those options, and looking at how we bring that forward, so that we can tie in to the overall proposal of what the bridge will look for. So, as a preferred concept by council and the community. And then, in the fall, we would then look at either design, build, charrette, or proposal, or depending if it's a community design, as to how we look at the overall construction of that. That would be a phase two of the process, so that we would go out with that later on, once we have a preferred design. So, we're not talking detailed design. We're talking, looking at structural requirements, how that would be built on top of the existing piers, depending on the style of bridge, with some cost estimates that then could go out further later in the year to get it ready for construction in 2017. So, we have an opportunity here with work already being done by the county to tag on to BTE, and then starting to work with Stantec, and combining those two consultants to compare...to go through a community process of looking at an overall preferred design for the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge.
I have a question on this. How long are environmental assessment reports valid? Like, if you have one this year, is it only valid for a two-year, three-year period? Or is it valid longer than that?
Typically, the process can take anywhere from eight months to two years for the EA process. So, whenever you make that submission and then that process, so if you were to delay to complete the EA and then do, you know, say, a year or two down the road, they would probably ask you to update that proposal and add additional information to it. That is partially why we think the timing with the counties is perfect timing, to be able to do that, and it also will save our substantial dollars in joining in with BTE.
My question was going to be if we needed to expand it, or to ask Pearl if they wanted to expand it for their bridge, but that's further out, so it's not valid, or any of that kind of information. So, I just thought I would ask.
And it's my understanding, and probably Brian can agree or disagree with this, I don't believe the new bridge would have to go through an EA process, because they already have their approvals through the ministry with regards to their piers.
So, for the listening audience, the internal Ministry of Environment report has been completed for Pearl Hospitality.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Morris.
Just for clarification, the estimated costs from BTE and the Stantec proposals, is that one-third, one-third, one-third? Is that the complete cost for all three bridges, or just our cost for the Victoria Street Bridge?
It's just with regards to our bridge. So, the county's already picking up BTE, so this, all they've given us is their estimate is to expand the county's current EA process to include the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge. And then, Stantec is specifically coming up with design criteria as a guideline, sort of like urban design guidelines for all three bridges. The design concepts would be specifically only for our bridge. The county's already doing their design concepts with BTE and MMMM on their bridge, and Pearl will go through, but the intent, as our discussion has always been at the table with Pearl, is that we would look to similar types of elements, so that we understand that all three bridges are going to be relatively close, and they can be built within the same spaces to be visually attractive in the downtown.
Okay, so I have a recommendation, that the council of the Township of Center Wellington supports expanding the environmental assessment by BTE Consulting for the replacement of both the Badley Bridge and the Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge, and that BTE Consulting be recognized under the township's cooperative purchasing initiatives with other public agencies, and in brackets, County of Wellington, as set out in Article 6 of the Purchasing Bylaw 2013-093, and further that Stantec Consulting be retained to develop a design guidelines and community engagement strategy to facilitate a preferred design for Victoria Street Pedestrian Bridge. Could I have a mover for that? Mover by Counselor Kittriss, seconded by Counselor McQuain. All in favor? And that is carried. Section 7, information items, we have a number of items here. Are there any questions on any of the items? I'm just going to put that out there, because these are all for information. So, we have the council and committee remuneration and expenses, minutes from Community Service Advisory Committee, minutes of the tender award committee, 7.3. I believe there is...is this the one with the amendment? 7.3 is not. 7.4, minutes from Tender Awards Committee, February 25th. And then, 7.5 is the minutes for Tender Award Committee, March 16th, and I believe there is an amendment for that, so take it away, Wes.
I was struck again by the copy and paste command, and so, the options exercised, it was the same option on all five trucks. So, Exhibit B and Exhibit C each have a quantity of two trucks, so instead of $550, it should have been $1,100, $550 times two on each of those two. So, the impact is that it reduces the amount that it's...this tender is under budget, but other than that, it has no impact.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Um, then we have item 7.6, minutes of the Heritage Center Wellington Committee from February 9th. And then we're on to our tracking sheet. And it looks like we're moving along. Is there anything to be added to this tracking sheet? Now, this is where technology is not my friend, so hang on for just one second. Are there any questions from the media? Boy, it's gonna be a good news day in the newspaper, I can just tell you that. Um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Kittrus followed by, seconded by Counselor Fisher, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for, uh, attending this meeting.